I'd like to call the work session for the Public Safety Committee to order. For some reason, I have misplaced my agenda. We're going to do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start, please, with a roll call.
Mr. Haiti.
Here.
Mr. Seer.
Present.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Mr. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Rumpel. Mr. Stockton. And Mr. Harris. Six present, one absent.
Thank you. This is the fourth work session to examine a way forward for Allegheny County EMS services. It shocks me that this takes so long, so my apologies, but there's a lot to work through. In our first session, we asked the EMS Advisory Board to review our EMS study and give us recommendations. In the second session, we heard from EMS Advisory Board recommendations, also some presentations. At the third session, we took the -- we also heard another presentation, and we took the recommendations from the Advisory Board, and we discussed those in length. We were all asked to write our thoughts on each of the topics discussed. The results of those comments are in the packet before you. Also in your packet is research done for us by Bonnie Van Housen detailing strengths and opportunities in our EMS coverage. Today, we will discuss scenarios, how we might use what we've learned to suggest how we might move forward. In addition to our committee members, legislators, and administrative team, we have with us today Bonnie Van Housen, EMS Coordinator and Emergency Management Director, Kevin Waters, EMS Advisory Board Chair, Neil Green, EMS Advisory Board Member, Scott Lampfier, representing Medical Transport Services, and Brian Jones, representing E5. This will be an open discussion, and all ideas, whether brought up before or not, are Subjects that need to be discussed and addressed will be coverage and response, billing assistance, recruitment, retention, training, and, of course, county costs associated with any changes. I don't know how far down that list we're going to get. Let's see. Today, I'd like to start by dealing with coverage and response. Bonnie has done some research for us. She's divided the county into ambulance districts and noted strengths and opportunities in each. As we look at this, I'd like to throw out there a hypothetical scenario with some assumptions that are required. The first assumption is that Allegheny County has gotten its CON. The second assumption is that all agencies in the county have signed on to the CON. We want to look at each district to see if improvements can be realized by the new expanded coverage area provided by the CON, whether it needs equipment or perhaps personnel. And with that, I think I would like to have Bonnie take over and discuss the map that she's provided and the data that goes with it. Bonnie, you're up.
Okay. Can you hear me? For one thing, I want to fix, in Zone 3, Wellsville should be in there. They have 871 calls, of which they've taken 750 of those calls, so 86 percent, and MTS has taken 14 percent of their calls. So just if you add that to there, so that you'll have that in Zone 3. The map that I put out is the map of coverage areas. It was brought to my attention, and forgive me because I've done this so long that I forget people don't know what I know. So each service area doesn't necessarily cover just their town. And I will, I'll start out with Alfred, just for an example. They cover the town of Alfred, portions towns of Hartsville, Ward, and in Steben County and Allegheny County. They, and it details the roads they cover and how many miles. Elmwood, on the other hand, is just the village and town of Elmwood. So every one of them is a little different, so the maps show the different areas. The one area on that map that is not correct is, the one that's in Angelica is in, that is MTS coverage, as I wrote on the maps. So that shows, that just gave what the CON covers, so that you're not, because obviously there's only 17 agencies opposed to, you know, 34 towns. So I wanted to know that everybody, what was covered. In looking at the data that we have, some people are doing very well. We have people doing, you know, upwards 70 percent and higher. There's other ones that would be between the 50 and 75, or 50 and 70, which is what the EMS study showed. And then we have some that are having some really big struggles, and they're covering like 30, 30, 35 percent of their calls. So those, obviously, are areas we need to look at, with the reminder that, you know, right now, MTS is covering all of those calls for us under our contract with them.
If I could jump in just for a second to build on what Bonnie has said, this, our intent here is in no way to marginalize MTS. They're an important facet that provides coverage for our county. Our interest here is to strengthen the areas of the county that aren't doing as well. And if you look at your data or you look at your map, you will see that down in the lower right-hand corner of the map, Friendship, Clarksville, Worth, Bolivar are not doing as well as some of the other agencies. And what we'd like to do is, we'd like to, just for a moment, discuss how that coverage can be improved. The first thing I would like to touch upon is, will there be advantages in those areas once we have a certificate of need and closest ambulance can respond? And, once again, I'm going to have to bounce it back to Bonnie, because I don't know the answer to that, but I bet Bonnie has a feeling for it.
In that area, if you look at it, all, you know, three of those are having difficult, all four of them, but one of them is contracted out right now. So Bolivar, Richburg, and Clarksville are all having difficulty covering. So your closest ambulance is, volunteer ambulance is not going to be, and obviously, an answer at that point, because if they're having trouble covering their own, they're going to have trouble covering mutual aid. That's why MTS has a rigs within that area to help cover that, you know, cover those calls that cannot be covered by the agencies. So I think it's a lack of personnel at that point.
Okay. That covers the Clarksville, Richburg, Bolivar. Did we mention Friendship? What's going on with Friendship?
Friendship, right now, is contracting with MTS, and they have MTS in their hall.
Okay. Do you see a benefit to closest ambulance for the Clarksville, Bolivar, and Richburg area, perhaps coming from Wellsville or perhaps coming from Cuba? Would that help? And do we need to look at something different for that?
They could, they could be called at that point if they're all on the CON. They could be dispatched. Again, even being that, your closest ambulance in that area will still be MTS, because they are within that, that coverage area. So even, even if they do closest ambulance, it would still be MTS at that point from Friendship.
Okay. I'm going to stop just for a second for questions and comments, if anybody has any. We're not too far into this. I expect more to come.
Yeah, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to express my thoughts on what Bonnie's putting together here, and it's been my thoughts from the beginning, is either to have the four quadrants, four zones, whatever. But I think what we really need to look at in this is who are actually active agencies? Who MTS is covering? Who E5 is covering? Where there's ambulances available? Whether they need manpower? If there's not infrastructure already there for equipment? What's needed for equipment to cover an area? I think we should lay it out. Those things need to come into play. If we're going to have any kind of thought in what it's going to cost us or anything, I like what she's putting here, but we also need to know who's doing what. Not just, there's an agency and MTS is covering this or that. Are they actually contracted? Those are important factors to this. I think we're really going to need to lay out here. Just my thought.
No, very good. On Friendship, we know that, first of all, we know Angelica is contracted with MTS. Did you say Friendship has a contract? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Is that, that is covered in the study?
Where's your microphone, there, Mr. Harris? To answer your question, I guess maybe I'd let Bonnie answer that question, probably.
As far as the contracting?
Contracting, response, you know, percentages, equipment, you know, inventory, you know, details.
The inventory that they did was good. The problem with the response is that's been well over a year, almost two years now, that response changes depending on how many people they have and people coming and going, recruitment. A lot of them are still in the same area. There's some that have improved, some that have not done as well since then. Part of the reason that Friendship did contract with MTS is they obviously had had some trouble during, even during the EMS study, and they told the EMS study right out that they, they were having trouble covering their own calls. To answer Fred's question, I agree 100 percent. I think that the, I think if you look at most of them, most of the agencies, I think it's personnel more than equipment. And then, of course, ALS, BLS plays a part in that.
Fred, does that answer your question? Are you, are you good?
Well, for now.
For now?
I mean, I think it's something we need to study a little bit more in, to know if, if a quadrant has issues to where there's some ambulances available, we need to man them. If MTS is going to contract, if E5 is going to cover whatever in those separate zones or quadrants, who's going to do what? And I think that'll be an important part of our CON going forward, of who's going to be able to do what, and that also lays out what we're going to need to ask about contracting with volunteers that are still operating. So.
Right.
Play a big part of that.
Okay. From, from what I see, from the information we have at the moment, it looks like unless there's a, a, an equipment issue, Clarksville, Richburg, and Bolivar, as we understand it at the moment, and if anybody else has information other than this, let me know, what they need is staff. So that's the problem with that going forward, assuming, and we need to find out, we can't assume, but assuming that there's equipment in place, what we need is staff. Now, the question is, if we wanted to staff those areas, I'm not saying we do, but if we want to, do we staff them with county employees? Or do we staff them with contracted employees? Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think, going forward, that it's pretty tough for us to step up and think that we're going to staff them with county employees at this point in time. I'm not saying that it's not something that could be looked at in the future, but if we really want to get this thing going, we need some experienced help to lay this out. I don't think we're going to be able to do it ourselves. So, you know, the staffing would, would probably come from one of our contracted agencies. That, you know, I don't think there's any other way to start out, but it'll set the groundwork and give us something to look at in the future. This is my thought on it.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Demick on that. It doesn't matter how close you analyze this or what kind of math you do, you still have X amount of paramedics in this county. The number hasn't increased, it's decreased if anything, and you still have to work with that number, and you can't change it, even if you wanted to.
Absolutely right. The good news is that there are, whoa, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Mrs. Rickets, who else?
So I'm just thinking about recruitment. And, like, in my class, there were two people from Richburg and two people from Bolivar in my EMT class, but I'm looking at, like, when you look at Alfred and their 99 percent response rate, they're doing something right in terms of recruitment. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could talk to people who are doing well in terms of recruitment, and then maybe use that model to help some of these smaller agencies. I know with us, the policies of the rescue squad also are important here, too. For instance, in our town, we have to have two EMTs go, and that's our own policy, not the policy of a normal ambulance squad. That's just our policy, which is fine. It's probably not bad, especially when you get somebody like me who's pretty new. But I think that it's important for us to understand, how is, how are some of these places recruiting and doing so well on their responses, and other places aren't able to recruit? And then use that model going forward, possibly. I mean, we're talking about what we can do to get Bozies to do an EMT class and, you know, things like that, but what, if we're, if it's, if some of these places are doing really well, let's take a look at that model and help these other agencies do that. And I, I'm happy to help with the recruitment as much as I can.
Okay. Excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Whoops.
I'd like to add to what Jen's talking about. I think another possibility with recruitment and incentive would be to get those that are EMTs, some of them, and Bonnie could correct me on this, we have EMTs in the county that are not with an agency, and being so, they could be offered to work with these contractors to help fill some of those spots where they don't have manpower through that hiring process. You know, that helps them get their recruitment also, just a thought, you know, that there's a possibility of being paid for doing part of what you're doing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Healy.
Yeah, I agree with it, the concept of contracting this out, and I think this is probably the fastest and best way to get the professional expertise that we need, make it the most effective and cost-effective way to cover these needs. It gives us more flexibility to adapt to any future needs or possible requirements that the state may come, additional come down to. Seldom does government do things better than the private sector, I'll throw that in there, too. And so I'm about getting the help, even to the volunteers, for sure, wherever we can to them, in any way we can to maintain their service, but I think, for time being, the best thing we can do is contract with the experts to cover the areas we can.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Right here, I'd like to agree with Mrs. Rickets. Alfred does a great job. They're very, very fortunate to get financial money from the State College. In my opinion, the days of the volunteers are really slimming down, because if you decide to go into that profession, to be an EMT or a paramedic, you have to make it a career choice. It's, it's very expensive, it's very time-consuming, and currently, as we speak, the state is working on legislation to make it even more difficult, where you'd have to need, like, an additional $8,000 worth of equipment. You would have to tag on to an agency's auto insurance, you would have to have dash cameras, updated radio equipment. It's, it's just yet another stronghold that's going to weed out the volunteers just a little bit more at a time. So although I agree recruitment is very important, and it's a very important part of spending taxpayers' resources, it is not an answer, and it's probably going to do very little at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I think that I would agree with what has been said about having to plug in some sort of contracted EMTs or whatever into areas that have a need. I think that's probably how we're going to have to go. I would hope, and I, I hope that legislator Seer isn't completely right on this, but I'm hoping that, once we get this thing off the ground with some paid staff, that we may be able to transition over time into volunteers. If we don't, we don't. But as has been said before, we need a plan to get this off the ground, and when. We talked a little bit about coverage and where we might need some. We talked about recruitment and retention, which is always a problem. We didn't touch upon training yet. I'm going to try to throw that into the basket of the folks that we may contract with for personnel. I'm going to use E5 as an example, perhaps not the only staffing option. We may have to put out an RFP. But I know that they do training. And I think that the better the training, I think the better chance we'll have of a better agency, and later on, when we transition, hopefully, to volunteers, it'll be more attractive to them, because it'll be a better, well-established agency. So what I'm thinking is, in the spots where we may need personnel, we may put out an RFP, we may ask that company that accepts that, if they provide training, to do some of that. In the meantime, yes, we need to talk to Alfred, we need to talk to anybody else that's successful, and we need to steal the ideas from them and incorporate them into a county policy or a county.
Mr. Chairman.
Training program. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Anything we do along the training line, it benefits everybody. It benefits all taxpayers, it benefits all the volunteers, and it benefits our professional services, the independent businesses. So, yes, whatever we can do along that line to push it forward, I agree that there's one area we can get started in right, right, right now, trying to enhance that.
Okay. Excellent. Now, here we are, we're making decisions that affect independent agencies throughout the county, and I'm not so tone deaf that I don't realize that we need to speak to these agencies. I've spoken to Bonnie, she and I, and anybody else on the committee that would like to, are going to meet with, over the next month, with agencies in the county, try to touch as many as we can, especially the ones that are involved in what we're talking about, and make sure that they've got a buy-in on this. This is not something that we're going to throw out there and dictate to them, but it's something that's going to benefit them. So we're going to speak with them. I don't want you to think that we're going to do this and throw the hammer on it. That's not how it works. We will need to touch upon, at some point, billing assistance. Some agencies currently don't bill. It's my understanding that if they go under the CON, they have to. Is that correct? Who knows? Anybody? Okay. We'll have to work that out. And then, finally, county costs, and we don't have any way of judging that at the moment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
As for your CON, if you decide to charge under your CON and they run under you, they have to charge when they're running under the Allegheny County OSPOs.
Okay. Thank you. There may be an agency or two that may have a problem with that. We can deal with that separately.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just want to throw out, so it's fresh in people's minds, any volunteer agency that already participates in their own billing would most likely to not have anything to do with the county doing their billing for them. It would be a disadvantage, if anything, losing part of the profit or the control in the billing process. So that's something that might need to go under a microscope a little bit more, so that they receive 100 percent of the money with no interference. Thank you.
Yeah. The idea of billing assistance is not meant to be a hindrance, it's meant to be a help. And if it's not a help to the agency, and there's a way that they don't have to do that, if they do their own billing, that's just fine. This is all, this whole thing is to create a better environment and to help all the agencies and to get us better coverage. That's what this is all about. And I know we're stumbling through this, because there are a lot of folks that don't have a lot of expertise in this, and I will, I will tell you, one of them is me. But I rely on some very good folks here that have done a very good job. Bonnie, in particular, has done a good job with putting together information. And I want to come out of this particular meeting with some action items and a way forward. And I think one of the action items that I can write down is agency meetings. But what are we going to talk to them about? We're going to talk to them, as I understand it, we're going to talk to them about coverage. We're going to talk to them about possible contracted personnel to bolster their, their ranks. We're going to talk to them about that. We are also going to ask them about equipment. Now, we believe that equipment is in place. If we find that's not the case, then we're going to have to deal with that. The, the big thing that we're going to be dealt with here, I think, the big hurdle is going to be personnel.
I think, just going back, touching on the billing, I don't know what the reason is why some don't choose to bill, but, I mean, that's something we ought to address with each, with each volunteer agency out there, too. If it's, and if they don't want, obviously, we can't make them do anything. If it's a help to them, and they say that's something we ought to take a look at, if they're not interested, then, then they're not interested. That's their choice.
Right.
Mr. Healy, that is true, as long as they're running under their own CON. If they're running under our CON and we charge, that is not a choice to them.
But Bonnie, let me ask you this.
And that includes if we're, if, no matter how they do it, whether they're contracted or not?
It depends, I mean, this is a moving part. If it's contracted staff and it's not, they're not running under our CON, and we're just contracting staff to them with no use of their equipment under us, that would be different. But if they're running under, everyone keeps using "under our CON," if we are a charging, a charging entity, then we have to charge under everybody's, whenever, whatever's under us, we will have to charge, if that's what we so choose to do.
Okay. I think I have a question on that one also. This, we're getting down in the weeds here a little bit, but a billing agency, currently billing, would not have to take advantage of our billing assistance. Is that right? They could continue to bill on their own, even if they were part of our CON?
When they're taking, okay. So, Brian, I'm going to pick on Wellsville, because you're here. If Wellsville If Wellsville contracted with us, okay, so that they can cover Independence, whatever, so they're closer ambulance, when they are covering a Wellsville call, they would bill under Wellsville, they would do their EMS charts or their EPCR chart under Wellsville. If they went out of that and they went to cover a different one as a, using our CON, so they went to, we're just going to call it Independence, okay, now they're not running as Wellsville, they are running as Allegheny County, they have to charge under Allegheny County, they have to do their EPCR under Allegheny County, and then that all has to come back to us to filter back to them. Even if they're a charging entity, if they're running under our CON and under us, they, it has to go through us, and it would be our responsibility at that point.
Bonnie, does Wellsville have the option of opting out and continuing to conduct business in Wellsville without...
Absolutely. We can't force any of them to contract with us. They would then do what they're doing now.
Thank you.
Okay, and if we, if there are agencies, we worked on the assumption initially that all the agencies would sign on to the CON. For the agencies that choose not to, for one reason or another, billing could be one of them. It's my understanding, Bonnie could help me with this because that's why I have her here, to help me. If, let's just say, an agency chose not to participate in the CON, could we then have a mutual aid type agreement where they could venture out of their little area into other areas of the county?
Okay, so mutual aid is one for the other. So it has to be mutual, so both of them have to be able to go back and forth. But CON will still, CON still has first option to take that call. So if they didn't have that, an Allegheny, when it was contracted with us, if they were closer, could go there, or MTS with their CON, because the CON still has that ability.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
As far as the contract, you're going to go talk to these agencies, I think it's going to be pretty darn important that this contract mentality is laid out a little bit better with our county attorney in everything to do with it, that lays out what you're going to do. You can't tell one agency one thing and another one another because they're not agreeing with it. You got to figure out exactly what you can do. If you're going to bill, somebody's going to contract, like you laid out with E5, if you're going to bill, they go to Independence, we bill it, a percentage goes to them, a percentage goes to us, type of thing possibly. But that stuff needs to be laid out. I mean, I don't think we can talk contracts with anybody unless you got the real meat and potatoes of what it's going to be. Because I don't think we want to go throw a bunch of stuff out and then come back and try to figure out a contract. I just don't think that's going to work. But, you know, there's the good parts of the contract. If they contract, like you say, I mean, they can still bill. Our responsibility is going to be, if they end up responding for us, in hopes most everybody ends up with a contract with us, but, you know, we're going to do it to benefit those. Those that don't bill now and struggle with paying for their departments, this is going to help. No two ways about it. I mean, it's going to be tough, but, you know, our billing agency, we should be helping them out as we're taking it, let alone trying to support what we got to do. And that's my foresight on it.
I just want to back up what Mr. Demick said. You'll find nine out of 10 people do not like government, and this can't be forced in their face, and this has to be beneficially mutual to everybody. And most people are busy in their day-to-day lives to pay attention to what government's doing, so I think that's where the negativity comes from.
Okay. I want to go back to coverage just for a second for the departments that are not part of the CON. I'm going to pick on right now specifically Alfred and Almond, okay? Alfred may not choose to participate in the CON. Is there any agreement? And I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking this. Is there an agreement that can be had where Alfred can respond to Almond, assuming Almond is part of the CON? Is there anything that can be done? I see smiles back there. What can we do? What magic legally can we do?
Bonnie, by the way.
Okay. Remind me, Bonnie.
They, if they're not running under our CON, they cannot go out of their area. It would be the CON holder that would have to go to that area.
No contract, no agreement can be put in place to fix that, that you're aware of?
Scott, you've already addressed this, so why don't you come up and address, you have addressed this before with these two.
Come on in. One here on that one. Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Good morning. So Alfred and Almond, the imaginary boundary in the school. Anyways, there is a place in the CON process, under the current statute 0606, the regional council can make an exemption. So AE Crandall and Almond Ambulance can put together a proposal that says, hey, we want AE Crandall to cover the school, which really seems to be the bottom line. It's not necessarily all of Almond or, it's the school. So AE Crandall, Almond Ambulance put together an agreement, they would, in the perfect world, come to us, so we would bring the agreement together, you know, as a three-party agreement to the regional council and only in. We would make a vote. I don't foresee any reason in the world that their vote wouldn't go through. So that's an exception to public health law that allows that to happen. It goes to the state for final review, but the regional councils, by and large across the state, the regional councils have the final say. At the state level, when appeals come and stuff like that, they always refer back to the regional council and say, it's your area, you know what's going on, does this make sense? So that is still yet to come to fruition. If that policy or that agreement ever came across my desk, we would absolutely support it. It's a, it makes sense, but it hasn't came. So obviously, on behalf of MTS, I'm not going to write a policy that says, Alfred and Almond, you guys can interchange some of your district. If they so choose to do that, then we could send it. It does have to stop here, it has to stop at the county level, because the county EMS coordinator has to endorse it. I would assume that either the county administrator or this board would have to give her the authority to endorse that, but there's a possibility for that.
And Scott, it requires an exemption because one is BLS and the other one is ALS, so they can't do straight-up mutual aid, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's the part of the question Bonnie already answered. They can't just contract with each other, they require some sort of exemption. So is this something that doesn't need to wait? They could be working on that right now, it doesn't have to wait for the county CON or anything else, right?
Absolutely, this could happen, we could file it at any time. Let's see, we're going to meet again in October, the first Wednesday in October, the regional council would meet. So it has time to make it through the governing bodies and be on the table for the October meeting. The other, I guess quickly while I was up here.
Sure.
I look at Zone 4, and we do a lot of work there. And Zone 4 is the Ball of a Richburg, Cuba Friendship, Clarksville. A little background, I guess, sometimes as Bonnie, I forget that you guys don't know all the inner workings. Currently, under, I believe it's municipal law, you can belong to one fire department. So we may have EMTs in the Ball of a Richburg area that have to choose which agency they belong to, because they can only belong to one fire department. So potentially, there's a, I'll use an example, there's an EMT that lives right at the intersection of 275 and County Road 40. Well, that EMT has to make a decision which agency they want to go with, even though it's probably equidistant to both agencies. The other thing is, and we've talked about this a lot, is from our agency, there's a cost of readiness. And for the volunteer, the cost of readiness is their time. So you're, for Clarksville, 44 calls a year. Those people are taking 178-hour basic EMT class to get certified originally, and then they're taking continuing education at 36, 40 hours, to continue to keep their card, to maybe answer a handful of calls a year, five or six calls a year. And I've had this conversation with Bonnie about recruitment and retention, people will find something to do with their time. I think that's why agencies that have high call volumes, Alfred, Wellsville, Cuba, some of these other, there's constantly ambulance calls. Every week, as an EMT, you're taking an ambulance call. In Clarksville, you might go three or four weeks before there's ever an ambulance call. And I think that volunteers, by and large, just find something else to do with their time. Maybe they garden, maybe they, but I think that is a problem across EMS and fire. The training to get certified and to stay certified is so much, and you don't use that skill very often. I think people are just finding other things to do with their time. So like in Zone 4, even if you didn't contract with MTS or contract with E5 or a system like that, if you could take all those providers in Zone 4 and say, okay, you guys can all go to any ambulance call that's in Zone 4. You're an EMT, we'll vet you through the OES office, that you have your credentials. If you're in Clarksville, you can go up to Richburg and take a call, or vice versa. I think that may help. I don't know that it's going to be the answer, but I think that people generally get in the business, even at the voluntary level, because they want to help. But when they go days and weeks without having to take a call, they just find something else to do with their time. And then when there is a call, those people are tied up.
Scott, you think that's part of the reason why they don't bill, too, they don't like dealing with the paperwork, or?
So some of the other billing issue is, if you're a fire district, the money has to go back, if you have commissioners, the money has to go back to the fire commissioners, which when the law was in its infancy, that was a big issue. Because downstate, the fire commissioners would get all this ambulance revenue, and then they would piece out just a little bit back to the ambulance squad. But unfortunately, and Neil, that's currently the case, right? It has to go back to the commissioners.
Yes. And the other, the other part of the billing which needs to be addressed with fire districts is the statutory spending limits and what this does as far as money coming in and how it affects the spending of the fire district. And the states, unless it's changed within the past year, the state's view was, if you bring in revenue, we want you to lower the taxes, which sounds great, except you're bringing in this revenue and it's not going to where we envision it going to EMS, it's going to reduce taxes. And when you have certain districts which are at their spending limits based on their taxable assessment, then you need to go through the motions of increasing your spending, the public hearings, and whatever needs to be done to authorize the increase of the spending. I believe it's the 2% that the towns and districts have to abide by as far as spending over that limit. So that's the other problem that comes in, unless there's a workaround for that, to figure out how we can go bring in revenue and still be able to spend it without being required to just reduce taxes.
That's a good point. And just so you know, to go along with that 2%, I believe there's legislation proposed that the 2% cap will not include EMS funding and some of the other funding to do with public safety, just a forethought. I mean, it's not happened yet, but I know it's proposed.
That's only if there's fire commissioners, correct?
Yes, that's a fire gesture.
So it wouldn't affect most of our fire departments, right? Our volunteer fire departments, they're just, they're not, they don't have commissioners?
I think most of your fire departments do have commissioners.
Eight departments, eight of our EMS are under our fire department commissioners. So almost half.
Which throws a wrench because it depends on how they're...
Okay.
I'd like to touch back on this mutual aid and then discuss Alfred and Andover, what, kind of what I think is a possibility. So mutual aid sounds great, but keep in mind, we have X amount of paramedics in this county, and that's what you have to work with. So when you do a mutual aid call, now you've taken a paramedic out of that zone, and he's busy attending to a patient and taking an ambulance call. So that's definitely at some point going to cross, you know, where you lose that superior service or that nine-minute response time or whatever your goal is. Where I think it could get slippery for Alfred is, you know, they're being compensated to keep a watchful eye on the college, and once they start doing mutual aid and getting out of their area, that's going to cause some problems if they're not able to respond to calls to where their bread is buttered. So that's also just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Alfred already does mutual aid. They do it with Hartsfield, they have a contract, they have a contract with Alfred, Town of Alfred, and I believe maybe Ward. So they're already doing mutual aid.
I'll just tack on to that. Colleges are good neighbors, you know, they recognize the importance, and they live in our communities, you know, they're employees. So they recognize the importance of this. I think we're maybe, you know, tilting a windmills, thinking there's going to be some uproar at the colleges by discussing and strategizing how to better serve the outlying communities.
The colleges are even sources of some volunteers, correct?
Yeah.
The vast majority, I would say.
Just as kind of a reset here, we're unplug and plug it back in again. That's pretty simple, right, Keith? That's, okay. I'm going to go back to talk about, briefly, about the CON and the benefits thereof. Would it be possible, maybe, for Carissa to just give us a quick, I'm sorry to pull you into this, a quick overview of what we expect to get benefit-wise from having a countywide CON? I think we're losing touch with that, and we're getting down in the weeds.
I think the benefit of the CON is that you are then able to operate a service of some sort. Without that, your contracts are just really supplementing other people's budgets. So you do a CON, you have the operating authority to say how the system looks, and you run those contracts under you. That is my understanding of what the purpose of going for a CON is.
Okay. But there are definite benefits for coverage with the CON.
Correct. I think it gives you better flexibility.
Yeah.
And you look at the map, you can see individual CONs are very limited, either by their geographical borders of their own district or where they've been able to have limited expansion. It's very difficult, as you've heard with mutual aid agreements, that your neighbor doesn't always have the same level of service as you provide. Exemptions are just that, exemptions, they're not meant to be every circumstance for every town. So I think the CON, it's a countywide one, gives the county greater flexibility to help the volunteer agencies. And I do want to tack back on to the question of whether you're looking at staffing services or county-owned personnel. I think limited number of paramedics are just that. If you look at E5, you look at MTS, you look at anybody else that's paying paramedics, I don't believe they're drawing in a large amount of paramedics from outside of the county. So they, too, have recruitment issues. Anything we can do to raise up the total number of paramedics in the county, whether they're our staff or somebody else's, is a good thing. And I think Bonnie has done a great job with the bridge course and the paramedic course, and we haven't grown a lot yet, but I believe next year, year after that, year after that, I think we are, our numbers will go up. And again, whether they're volunteers or being employed by E5 or MTS, or ultimately, if we use last resort county employees, every one of them will help. So thank you for putting the money into training, and thank you, Bonnie, for coming up with those programs.
Okay.
I just wondered, would that CON flexibility be able to, like what Scott was talking about, where in that quadrant four, be able to, you know, assist there, but then do different assistance in different quadrants?
I think, again, that's how you choose to operate your CON.
Okay.
I think whoever chooses to contract with you, under that CON, you would be utilizing those people however you feel. And I believe, Bonnie, the idea is whoever is under contract within that quadrant would then be able to respond within that zone or quadrant, whatever we're calling them.
I believe that is, I would want Department of Health on that, but I do believe that we could do that. If we had the CON, like over that, we could, as Scott said, and Scott's looked at this model before, him and I've looked at it, that to vet different people and be able to have them respond to, you know, under our agency opposed to under each of the fire agencies.
And the purpose of doing the CON is to fill some gaps, and the gap...
And the gaps, as they existed two years ago, as Bonnie mentioned, are not the same gaps today. And they won't be the same gaps two years from now. So, there, there will be the ability to have some flexibility too, I think.
Let me ask you a question. I think Scott kinda mentioned this, and then my mind went with it. But it feels to me like there are times that are harder to get a crew together, like, say, nights, or maybe Sunday afternoons. Would it be possible, then, to maybe work with some of our agencies to pay volunteers at those times if they're on call, but only to cover those areas?
So, my understanding is that, um, an agency can't pay its own volunteers, but that somebody else can contract to have that same person on, on their payroll staffed there. And I think that goes back to Department of Labor issues, where you can't have somebody volunteer for services that you pay for as an employer. So, in that scenario, if you had somebody that was on our staff, and just pick, I'm gonna pick on Friendship. If, if you had somebody on our staff in Friendship, um, they could be working this shift as a county employee, and I believe they would be free to continue volunteering under Friendship after that. I, I think. That's the way I believe it works.
Yes, I think so. I was on the phone with Ed Major from the state today, and he said, "There's a lot of ways to do different things like that. It's just, it's all gotta be written out and, in contract form."
Well, in terms of recruitment in my area, I think that would be beneficial, because I can definitely see there are times when it's harder to get a crew together than other times.
Sure.
And Jen, you're right. And the funny part of that is, every locality, it's a little different. You know, it, it, you might have trouble on the weekends, where someone else might have a lot of trouble during Monday through Friday, or, you know, there's something going on. I'll pick on Neil. Um, they have bingo on Wednesday night, so maybe everybody was busy there and, you know. So, every, you have to look at every town and every, for them to, to figure that out.
Question about the training, again.
Go ahead.
Would, uh, BOCs and, uh, have we contacted our, our state representatives about, uh, lobbying for, uh, to get BOCs more involved in, uh, in the training?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, as far as I know, no. Um, there is a recruitment and retention, um, team that is working, and they've talked to me a lot. And I've given them the names and numbers of the Cataragus Allegheny BOCs system to reach out, and it's a slow process, but I haven't heard a lot back. So, if, you know, if you thought that was a great idea, I-
Well, I think it's, it's always good to lobby our, our representatives.
Absolutely.
And I think, uh, we got two state centers, Ameren Burrell, and currently, Joe Jolio still are, are, are assemblymen. And, uh, it, this is being near and dear to them. I'm sure they would do everything they could to help us.
Honestly, as a former educator, the easiest or best way to recruit high school kids is for the schools to be able to give them credit for this class. It's not a hard thing to do. It's got a lot of science in it. It wouldn't be that difficult. And that would, you'd get a lot of high school kids more interested in it if they were getting high school credit for taking the class.
Well, whether they're a volunteer or became professional, that'd be a great, be a great vocation for them.
Mrs. Rickles-Wales, uh, do, are you aware of, uh, any high schools that are currently doing this, either with credit or without?
There's a few BOCs that are doing it already. I think Anandaga is one, and I'm not sure what the other ones are. They gave me the information, so I have it at home. But there are some BOCs that are doing it, and they're getting credit through BOCs. I'm not aware of any high schools.
Pioneer High School's been doing it for over 12 years.
Oh, there you go, and that's close by.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Hang on just a second. I think that's an excellent point, and I think that's something that should be, uh, investigated, uh, 'cause I think you're right. Have it offered, have it offered and have their credit. Yeah. Mr. Demick, sir?
I'd just like to echo more of Ms. Wales is talking about. Ed mentioned before, I know when E5 gave their presentation, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that they tried to recruit EMT people in their off-times to be part of their staff. Um, that's something that's went on. My, my daughter, in the past, worked with a staffing aging agent out of the Finger Lakes, um, with Penn Yann, and did the same thing. She worked in the daytime in Cohocton, where there was not enough people to man an ambulance. At night, there was. So, there was two of them that's, that were on staff all day long, um, to cover that. That's the type of thing that I foresee that we're gonna need to do. You know, it's like, you know, the cost of preparedness, as Scott mentioned, is very important. And it's, and it doesn't make you any money, but it's a necessary evil. Um, and, and we really need to concentrate on that part of it and how we're gonna do that. But I think the incentive, with what Jen was talking about, um, for recruitment, with people to take the paramedic classes and so on, if we publicize, there may be a career for this. You know, they may take it, not just for volunteerism, but an actual career. You know, there, there's, there's something that they could make a full-time life out of this, even if they went, we hope they don't go elsewhere, but, you know. There, there's a lot to look forward to that, and I think that's the pub. We need to publicize that in a big way, um, for a lot of different reasons. So, that's just my thought.
Yep, excellent.
Just as a, as a caveat to all that, um, the WCA, which is where we do our, um, paramedics through, thank you to, to Scott for getting into Allegheny County. But I just had a meeting with him last Friday, and there was, he put out a questionnaire to the providers in the county, and there's 20 people interested in taking paramedic in January.
Hmm, terrific. Okay, um, I just wanna just go back to CON just for a second, because, uh, I, I know that, uh, CON gives us, uh, control and control of, uh, standards and whatever. But the thing that really gets me, the phrase that gets me and puts me fully into the CON pen is the phrase "closest ambulance." And that's, that's what I would hope we can achieve with a CON, uh, to dissolve some of these artificial barriers and division lines that are out there so that whoever it may be in the county that has an emergency, they can get the closest ambulance, which makes some sense to me. Um, okay, now, uh, Mr. Demick brought up some excellent points here about what we are able to tell the agencies during our individual meetings. Uh, we need to talk about contracts, and maybe we need to talk about staffing. So, I guess my question, this is gonna bounce back to the table, back to, uh, Carissa and Allison, perhaps, um, do we have, can we put together, what do we need for contract before we can talk to these people? Do we need something? What do we need? And then I'm gonna ask you the same question about RFP.
I think you need to nail down your concept of what it is you'd be asking them to do for the county when you talk to them.
Okay.
So, things like billing would be good for them to know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, how far are you expecting them, if they're under contract with us, to go out? You know, their closest manned ambulance, um, available is looking like a, a district or a zone proposal. You know, you could give those zones to them. Um, what their responsibilities would be, and what, really what the benefit to them would be? What is, what is the county offering to them? So, I'm assuming, you know, that could be in the, the form of paid staff, either through a staffing service or not, to guarantee that there was coverage in their zone. And would they like to be a partner in that? Those would be the, the main things I'd look to, to know. I think you don't need to go out there with contract terms. You need to go out there with a concept, and it should be the same concept discussed with one company as it is with another. Um, I, I don't think it should vary a whole lot. And if they are willing to be partners, then we can come back and look at, you know, moving forward with the CON. The CON is, is easy. We just need to know what it is that the board wants to do, that we put it in the CON application.
Okay. And obviously, the RFP would be, uh, something that would happen after we meet with them, and we determine their staffing needs that we might want to fill.
Correct. We'll, we'll look at, um, RFP, we'll look at, um, what it is you're asking for somebody to respond for. So, if the RFP is for just personnel, is the RFP for personnel and equipment? Are you expecting someone to come in here with an ambulance, with people on board? Or you're just expecting them to come with people, and you are providing the ambulance? Those sorts of things? And then, if you know budgetary, what your limit would be, sometimes you can put a cap in the RFP that, you know, you're looking for responses not to exceed X-dollar amounts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to express, express my opinion on what you asked Mrs. Knapp. Um, if, if this board isn't willing to, um, spend money on this and compensate these agencies, you might as well just close the meeting right now. That's gonna be a major, uh, factor in this happening, and we're going to have to spend money. And there is no two ways about it. Thank you.
Okay.
You could do the, uh, question here, just question. You could do the RFP both ways, right? And then you might have a different, uh, answer, if you divide it up into quadrants, you might have a different answer for, for each of you, and it would give you, uh, at least a, uh, look at what the cost was both way.
I, I, I think we'll get to drafting the RFP when we have a little bit more idea of what the board is looking for. Um, RFPs aren't, aren't terribly difficult to draft, other than the scope of services. If you guys can help us nail down the scope of services, we can get the RFP out there.
Okay, that's fair. Oh, where? Scott, come back up, sir. Always a good resource.
I just want to ask about closest ambulance.
Yes, please.
So, I have two questions, I guess. One is, closest ambulance makes absolutely the best sense for the person who needs an ambulance, right? The closest resource gets there the fastest.
There's a "but" in here. I can hear it coming.
However.
Oh, it's a "however," okay.
As an agency that staffs an ambulance and tries to be a good partner in EMS and support the volunteer system, if we use closest ambulance concept today, we would literally be shoving the volunteer ambulance service out of this county. We are sitting in an ambulance, staffed, ready to go. We are going to be probably to every call first. Also, uh, we'll use Alfred as an example. We transport a patient to St. James, we're driving down Main Street in Alfred, there's a call at Alfred State College. Closest ambulance, you're gonna send the MTS resource. That doesn't allow the volunteers or the contracted entity of that town to provide the service that they are more than capable to provide, because you're sending the closest ambulance. I think that there, it's a double-edged sword, and I think that if you want to continue to support volunteers, which we've tried very hard to do. Uh, you know, the MTS model today currently is, even if we get there first, if the volunteer agency crews up and shows up before the patient's loaded, we let the volunteer agency take the ambulance call. It's their call first. So, um, I just, unless I'm not understanding closest ambulance.
No, no, you're, you're, you're understanding exactly what I was thinking, and, uh, now I have more information to process, because you just said that, so thank you.
I think the one problem, and I agree with him 100%, except when you're in an outlying area. So, like, for me, Pike might be closer than you guys. And the ability to have somebody that's out of the county respond would be helpful sometimes, 'cause, I mean, you only have so many ambulances, you know. So, that is, and I think Alfred and even, like, Genesee and Cuba, those, the ones that are on the borders with other towns, that's where closest ambulance might help. But it doesn't have to be that. I mean, I agree with him 100%, um, but other than that. I mean, there's some pretty outlying areas in my area, I'm gonna tell ya. And if you look at Fillmore, look at the size that they cover compared to, say, Houghton or Rushford.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd just like to add to that. Good point. Um, I think the concept of the zones or quadrants is gonna make a big difference with that. That's why you need to review each one, could make that difference of who's where, um, what that need may be. I mean, when you're in Wellsville District down there, that's gonna be totally different than what it is in Fillmore and up there, and who can respond. Same way with Elman and Alfred, you know, who can respond to that, or who may be coming from where. I think that's the importance of having those broke down and looking at them separately. So, just my thought.
Absolutely. It's a complicated situation. It's not easy. I try to break stuff down to the simplest, uh, equation, but sometimes, uh, it won't, it won't break down. This is one of those.
I think the other thing, too, to, to remember is, even in zone staffing, right? Which is kind of what we do today. Um, you know, at full staffing, zone staffing, we would have Ormo, um, our base in Syo, Friendship and Angelica. But we go with Fillmore, we're gone for three hours. That's a three-hour resource allocation. We go with Rushford. It's the same thing. And most recently, we're going to Rochester and Buffalo right from the scene on a regular basis. Unfortunately, on a regular basis. So, now we're talking four, four and a half hours that we're, that resource comes out of play. So, just something to think about.
Thank you.
And it, it is true that every fire district has a different distance to a hospital, which I had never really thought of until I got involved in this. So, if you're in Wellsville, and you're responding in Wellsville, you're what, five minutes to the hospital? But if you live in Centerville, I mean, you know, I was in a call yesterday, and the, the paramedic was like, "How far are we from Wellsville Hospital?" I said, "A good 30 minutes at least." So, it depends on where you are as to how long, and if MTS responds, they're with them. You know, if we have to take their paramedic, then that paramedic is gone for a chunk of time.
Yeah. No, absolutely right. All right. Boy, we've covered a lot of territory, you know? Um, all right, what have we, what have we accomplished? What have we come out of this with? We've come out of this with, uh, the fact that Bonnie and I, and whoever else on the committee wants to participate, are gonna talk to some agencies. We're gonna get some input. We're gonna discuss, uh, staffing. We're gonna discuss CON and possibly billing, probably billing. But to get a feel for it, because we don't have, we won't know what it is we're putting together for contracts until after we have spoken with the agencies. That's where I believe we are. Anybody have any comments on that, steer us in a different direction?
Oh, I had one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did, where, where did we come down on the, the nurse triage idea?
I don't think we've discussed that, but I'm a big fan. Uh, and I, I think that that's something that should be explored and should, uh, I've been really focused on coverage here, but yes, that's something that has to be put in play. I'm not sure exactly how to do that. We're gonna have to ask Bonnie.
We're gonna have to call Dr. Farney in on that as well.
Okay, all right. No, I think that's very important.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
You have a transportation barrier in Allegheny County. So, nurse triage line's great, but my thing, triage, and say you still need to go to urgent care, how do they get there? I know you have a bus system. I know there's a lot of talk about your bus system, but that is a very big barrier. A lot of people go in an ambulance because three cars in the driveway don't run.
Okay. Uh, well, I think, uh, the nurse triage thing, uh, has some benefit to it, and I, I think we should explore it. Uh, I, I really would hate to see an ambulance roll when it doesn't need to, 'cause it costs money, as you guys know. And it takes time and puts, uh, your, your folks out of service. So, uh, yes, I want to explore that, and thank you for bringing that up. Um, what other directions do we need to go in? We've covered a lot of territory. We've got some action items. It's up to Bonnie and the committee. Anything else?
I think if we talk to the, to the agencies, then we need to come back and figure out which direction you're going in.
Yeah.
To apply, to decide how we proceed from there to, for the CON and whether we're, whatever we're doing next.
Yeah, right now, we're still working in concept phase here, and we need to nail this down. And again, I apologize, this is taking so long, but there's a lot of moving parts, and I learn stuff. I learn stuff, Scott, every day. Okay. Everybody ready to do the last of this? Any unfinished business? New business? Go to the order? Motion to adjourn?
Seer.
Thank you.
Two or three seconds.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for participating, it's a really good meeting.